Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like for you to know that we're calling the meeting to order for the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education for September the 17th meeting. And at this time, I'd like for you all to stand with me as we do the opening ceremony for the, from the junior ROTC from Central Cabarrus High School. We've got Cadet Second Lieutenant Princess LaCarta, Captain Cadet Ashley Haas, Cadet Major Bally Rossman, Cadet Second Lieutenant Sarah Robinson. Also, the cadets are being led tonight by Lieutenant Nelson English, United States Air Force retired, and Master Sergeant Carlos De La Cruz from the U.S. Air Force retired. And we also have tonight the Central Cabarrus High School Choir under the direction of Mr. Joel King. They'll perform the National Anthem for us. I'd like to call their names out. Dallas Balkum, Skylar Beaver, Kelsey Blake, Elena Connor, Emerald Courtney, Jesus Dorta, Michaela Greenwood, A.J. Hillard, Leah Kirk, Casey Little, Becca O'Reilly, Christian Ortiz, Gary Raymond, Jessica Sigmund, Desay St. George, Michaela Williams, and Sarah Yao. And we all stand for the National Anthem. Y'all ready?
What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the peril and spight? O'er the ramparts we watched, where so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Forward, color! Up! Right, take. Forward, march!
It's always an honor, and that was a treat tonight, to have those, all those with us from the Central Cabarrus High School Choir. Okay, board members, we're gonna jump right into the agenda. The first item here is to set the agenda. Do I have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented?
So moved.
A motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda's set as presented. Now we'll go into our recognitions portion. The first recognition tonight will be Ms. Ronnie Boone will come to the podium and be doing the Impact Through Education Awards. And those of you that are here for that, remember the drill a little while ago. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Boone.
Good evening. I'm excited to be back before you to present the Impact Through Education Awards. We had a little break over the summer, but now we're back in school and back to honoring our students and staff at our schools. Tonight, we're gonna recognize students and staff at Pitt School Road Elementary School and the Performance Learning Center. I'm gonna begin tonight with Pitt School Road Elementary. Would any members of the school's administrative team please come forward so they can stand with their students and staff? And if you'll stand right there on the green tape, right there. Our first honoree from Pitt School Road Elementary School is Shelby Starr. Would Shelby and her family please come forward? Shelby is a fifth grade student at Pitt School Road Elementary School. She's the daughter of Shannon and Mary Starr. She has one sibling, Ainsley, who's also a student at Pitt School Road Elementary. Shelby is definitely living up to her last name. She is a Starr. She's a singer and an actress, and stars in all of the Pitt School Road Drama Club productions and sings in the school's chorus. She also sang for the Spring Arts Council last March and performed in the musical Hairspray in Harrisburg. Shelby enjoys performing, dancing, and spending time with her friends. She's a sweet young lady who is quite accomplished. Pitt School Road is proud to present Shelby Starr with the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Mom, Dad, everybody. Our next honoree from Pitt School Road Elementary School is Brennan Wilcox. Will Brennan and his family please come forward? Brennan is also a fifth grade student at Pitt School Road Elementary School. He is the son of Tom and Meg Wilcox. He has two younger siblings, Carter and Megan. Brennan has type 1 diabetes and is a role model for us all. He works very hard for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation and serves as a guest speaker for fundraising rallies. He's a very confident, hard-working young man who excels in his academics and is a leader among his peers. He loves to play sports. His favorites are soccer and lacrosse. He is also an accomplished chef. His seafood dishes are superb, all of which he does in an effort to stay healthy. Brennan is a wonderful young man with a bright future ahead of him. Congratulations Brennan on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Pitt School Road Elementary School. Our next honoree from Pitt School Road Elementary is Mrs. Elizabeth Wagner. Would Mrs. Wagner and her family please come forward? Elizabeth Wagner grew up in Mount Pleasant and attended Catawba College. She enjoys planting vegetables in her garden, playing with her four-legged children, her two dogs, reading and spending time with her family and friends. During the summer, she volunteers at the Conflict Resolution and Mediation Center for the Cabarrus County Court Services. Mrs. Wagner is a wonderful teacher at Pitt School Road Elementary. She has a fourth and fifth grade combination classroom. She works diligently to meet the needs of all of her students and is concerned not only with their academic growth, but she also strives to meet the social and emotional needs of her students. For example, when a student didn't have food at home, she provided his lunch for him every day of the week for the entire year. She walked up and down the aisles of Walmart to make sure that one of her students had presents on Christmas morning. Additionally, she plans before and after school daily to prepare activities for her students that will inspire them and want to help them learn more. She credits her grandparents and her former teachers for giving her such a passion for teaching. She's an exceptional teacher, and her school family says it feels honored to have her at their school. Congratulations, Mrs. Wagner, for receiving the Impact Through Education Award, and thank you for all of your hard work. And our final honoree from Pitt School Road Elementary School this evening is Mrs. Beth Rucker. Would Mrs. Rucker and her family please come forward? Beth Rucker is married to a wonderful man, Todd Rucker, and they have a fabulous 15-year-old son, Andre. That's what it says here. She grew up in Stanley County and graduated from West Stanley High School. She furthered her education at UNC Wilmington for one year and then transferred to UNC Charlotte, where she received a bachelor's degree in administration. After college, she entered the human resources field and obtained her professional certificate in human resources. After 15 years in HR, she came to Pitt School Road Elementary School and worked as a teacher assistant and bus driver, and now she's a treasurer for Pitt School Road Elementary School. Mrs. Rucker is an award-winning treasurer in our county. She goes above and beyond to contribute to the entire school. She oversees the social committee, provides coverage for teachers, decorates bulletin boards, assists with monitoring students, purchases refreshments for staff, and the list just goes on and on. Pitt School Road Elementary School is blessed to have her. Congratulations, Mrs. Rucker, on making a positive impact on education at Pitt School Road Elementary School. Next, we will honor students and staff from the Performance Learning Center. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the school's administrative team to come forward, and I'd also like to invite Mrs. Andrea Palo, who is the Executive Director for Communities and Schools here in Cabarrus County, to join them, since Performance Learning Center is a joint partnership between Cabarrus County Schools and the Performance Learning Center. Our first honoree from the Performance Learning Center is Lawson Durham. Would Lawson and her family please come forward? And everybody can come forward. Lawson is a hard-working student who strives for excellence and never settles for average grades in her classes. She enjoys reading and writing, and through her writing demonstrates a great deal of creative talent. Even though mathematics is not her favorite subject, Lawson perseveres until she understands the process for deriving correct answers. Lawson contributes to the positive environment of the PLC with her grace and graciousness. She consistently treats students and staff with respect and is recognized by her peers for her academic achievements and excellent work ethic. For these reasons, Lawson makes a positive impact on the educational environment at the Performance Learning Center, and we are proud to present her with the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Our next honoree from the Performance Learning Center is Michael Edwards. Would Michael and his family please come forward? Michael is dedicated to his work and demonstrates outstanding problem-solving and critical thinking skills. He is a natural in mathematics and usually derives the correct answer immediately. When he doesn't, he's determined to figure out his mistake and never repeat it. He is recognized by both students and staff for his intelligence, focus, and drive. Michael has a unique perspective on his lessons and composes himself with maturity and respect in his dealings with others. For these reasons, Michael makes a positive impact on the educational environment at the Performance Learning Center, and we congratulate him on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. Our next Performance Learning Center honoree is Ms. Amber Handy. Would Ms. Handy and her family please come forward? Ms. Handy has been at the Performance Learning Center for three years. She is a student favorite who has established herself as a role model. Ms. Handy has the unique ability to connect with each student and show them she cares for them and expects nothing but their best. When asked about Ms. Handy, a colleague said, "The world looks brighter from behind a smile." This can be said about Amber Handy and her love and compassion for all the students and staff at the PLC. She's a great teacher and mentor who forms relationships with students and doesn't accept anything but their very best. She's best known not only for her smile, but her energy and her willingness to help each and every student succeed. A student states, "You will never meet another teacher who loves and cares about their students more than Ms. Handy. She does everything she can to ensure our success, not only at school but in life. She is so easy to relate to, and you will never catch her without a smile on her face. I look forward to being in her class each and every day." It is clear that Ms. Hamby, Ms. Hamby's presence, I'm sorry, it is clear that Ms. Handy's presence at the PLC offers students someone to admire and strive to please. She is responsible for making an impact on education at the Performance Learning Center, and we congratulate you. And our final honoree this evening from the Performance Learning Center is Mrs. Renee Moll. Would Mrs. Moll and her family please come forward? Mrs. Moll has been at the Performance Learning Center for four years. She is an integral part of the school by monitoring student performance and attendance. She builds productive relationships with students and creates contacts in the community to help the students and support and give the, get the support and the confidence they need to succeed. When asked about Mrs. Moll, a staff member said, "No one expects a seed to produce a harvest the same day it is planted." Renee Moll has planted many a seed in the PLC students. Her willingness to share words of wisdom, encouragement, love, compassion, and a shoulder for those students not having a great day is evident. She seeks opportunities for the PLC students and is always there for them. A student states, "Mrs. Moll has such a helpful and kind spirit. She's always willing to do anything and everything for all of the students at the PLC. She forms great relationships and advocates for us in the community in every way she can. She is a blessing to have on our side." There is no doubt that Mrs. Moll is responsible for making a positive impact on education at the Performance Learning Center. Congratulations and thank you for all that you do.
Okay, we got one more, I think, Ms. Boone, and I think that we're gonna have Ms. Kathy Augur to come to the podium here along with Dr. Shepherd as we do the Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award. And I think that they've been doing this now for two, three years, and tonight, we've got Mr. Thomas Dunlap. He's the sales manager for Hilbush Ford, and they make this presentation, so whenever you're ready, Ms. Augur, we'll do this one.
Thank you. Good evening. I am excited to have the opportunity this year to present the Cabarrus County Schools Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month. And talking about the fact that this has been in place for a while, we are entering our second full year of this partnership with Hilbush Ford. We continue to be grateful for their support of Cabarrus County Schools and their recognition of our outstanding teachers who make going above and beyond standard operating procedure. Thanks to the generosity of Hilbush Ford, 13 terrific Cabarrus County Schools' teachers have been honored. Tonight, we honor number 14. As Mr. Shu shared with you, Tim Vaughn, the General Manager for Hilbush, could not be with us this evening, so we appreciate Mr. Thomas Dunlap, Hilbush Ford's Sales Manager, being here. And Mr. Dunlap, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, welcome to our board meeting. I'm pleased to announce that the Cabarrus County Schools' Hilbush Teacher of the Month for September 2012 is Michelle Harper. And Ms. Harper, would you and your family and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward? I'd like to share some information about Ms. Harper with you. Michelle Harper is currently a Learning Connections teacher for grades 3-3-5 at Charles E. Boger Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by one of her student's parents from her previous school, Cox Mill Elementary. In her nomination, the parent wrote, "We moved to Cabarrus County in December 2011 specifically for my son, who has autism, to be in the class for students diagnosed with autism. He was suffering in his old school, and it was a constant battle to secure services. When I met his teacher, Ms. Harper, for the first time, I was so impressed and began to hope that my son would finally be comfortable in school and be taught the way he needs. In just five months, my son increased his reading level by two grade levels. More importantly, he's happy. Ms. Harper is truly an exceptional teacher, and we're so lucky to have her teaching our children." Ms. Harper, please accept our congratulations and thanks for all that you do each day for your students and for making such a positive impact on their lives. We're honored to have you as part of the Cabarrus County Schools' family. If you'll join me and I. And if you'll allow our board members to shake your hand. Thank you.
Always appreciate people being recognized for their hard work. It's something that we don't do as often as we need to. Okay, board members, we need to move on to 5.1, where we have the approval of the minutes from our August the 6th and our August the 13th meetings. And do I, do the meetings, I mean, the minutes, are they approved as presented, or do you have corrections or things that need to be changed? If not, do I have a motion that the minutes be approved?
So moved. I would make a motion, we approve the minutes of August the 6th and of work session also August the 13th, business meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved, and so now we'll move on to the report section. And it's got a place for the board chair comments, and I don't really have much to say tonight. I'm glad school's back in. I'm glad that things are running real smooth. The numbers are going up. We're close to 30,000 students enrolled in our school district now, and we're running a couple hundred buses every day and with no incidents, and it seems to be going good. And so I'm looking forward to a very good year this year. And next up is our superintendent's comments. Dr. Shepherd, if you have comments, now's your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that we live in a wonderful community, and that in addition to the support of our parents and staff, we have the support of local business and faith communities. And to that end, I want to publicly thank you for your generous support of the Cabarrus County Schools during the month of August, and as of late, as late as last week, we received donations of backpacks and school supplies, including everything from glue sticks and crayons and pencils to composition books and rulers and binders and folders. We just want to thank you all for your support. This is the time of year when schools host curriculum and meet the teacher nights, and parents, I encourage you to attend these events, and the events are excellent opportunities for you to learn about what your child will learn this year and the ways that you can help facilitate and support that learning. Tonight, I want to extend, to extend the congratulations to Wyancoff Elementary School for its recent win of the Give with Target competition. Thanks to online voting from parents, friends, and community members, Wyancoff was the number one school in North Carolina in that competition, and the school received $1,275 in Target gift cards. I also want to commend Northwest Cabarrus High School, which hosted a State Farm Insurance Company Celebrate My Drive event over the last weekend. This event shares information with student drivers about the dangers of texting and driving and encourages them to and encourages them to sign a pledge not to engage in that dangerous practice. And just a couple of reminders about important dates coming up. September 24th, progress reports will go home for middle and high school students. And on September 28th, we'll have a teacher work day, and there will not be school for students on that day, and our teachers will be participating in some valuable staff development. Mr. Chair, that's my report tonight, and thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Shepherd, for your fine report there. Okay, we're gonna move on now to 8.0. Yes?
Could I have just a point of privilege for just a second?
Absolutely, Ms. Harper.
I just wanted to make a brief statement. This past week, we had the fair, and during the fair, we had a ag business, environmental, and science and, if I get this right, we had a day where we had our students come to the fair, our sixth graders. We had over 3,029 students come for three days, and I had some of the, some of the volunteers that mentioned that our sixth graders were so well behaved. And I got a question for our, all our, our people here. Now, Dr. Shepherd, you can't answer this question, because you know the answer, because I told you. Okay, we're gonna have a little question here. Does any, us, no, all of you here. What is the number one crop in North Carolina?
I gotta guess. Sweet potatoes.
You're right. Yeah, yay! Most people, we had all kinds of guests, so you're good. It is sweet potatoes. Okay, the number two question. How many stomachs does a cow have? Yes, yay, so we're good. But those were some of the things that our students learned, and they learned many other things, but they, I did go to a lot of the, they learned about the soils. They learned so many things, and I went around to all the stations, but we had 55 stations. And the other thing that I thought was very, very interesting, we had over 480 volunteers that volunteered their time these three days, and it was, it was just so interesting. We had a science teacher. I got to rub a black snake, a live black snake. But the children were just wonderful, and it was just so interesting to watch these children, and I was just so pleased when, when all these volunteers were talking about how well behaved these children were. And you could tell they were just so interesting, and they got to milk a cow, and, and just all kinds of things that were really, it was, it was just so wonderful. And I just wanted to thank the volunteers, the teachers, and everyone that was involved in this, and it has grown and grown, and I just wanted to congratulate everyone that was involved in that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me share that with our audience and with everyone.
Ms. Carpenter, you're very welcome, and thank you for that excellent report. You know, after all, Cabarrus County is an agricultural fair, and so all those things, you know, it pertains to agriculture. And about the cow with the four stomachs, I took a guess, but no, I really knew though. But now Blake, but Blake, now, I'm surprised that sweet potatoes goes.
Well, let me just say that even though I grew up in Georgia, my grandfather, who was an educator and principal in Davidson County and had a little bit of a farm and garden, used to tell me all the time, "The best sweet potatoes in the world come from North Carolina." So he made sure that I remembered that one little fact.
Yeah, well, that's good. I think at one time that it was tobacco, though, I think at one time, but it's that took second seat to sweet potatoes. So that's a good thing. Okay, board members, we need to look now to 8.1, which is the approval of our consent agenda. These are the items that we talked about last week when we had our work session, and so I would like to entertain a motion that the consent agenda be approved as we discussed it.
So moved.
Have motion. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved, and we'll move forward now to the action agenda. And I'd like to ask Ms. Kelly Klutz to the podium, where she's gonna talk with us about the approval of the release of the lottery funds that we talked about last week, and she'll clarify any questions or anything that you need to clarify this. And this is an action agenda, so we will, I mean, action item, so we will be voting on this. Ms. Klutz?
Yes, Chairman Shu, I'd like to clarify, on September the 9th, I talked about the uses of the lottery funds, and there is one correction that needs to be made. Mark and I did look, and there is no restriction on the purchase of land with lottery funds. You may use the lottery funds to purchase land, and I did make that statement incorrectly on September the 9th, and I wanted to clarify that for our board and our public. So there is no restriction on land. So I wanted you to know, have that information before you voted on this item today. And I'll address any other questions or concerns that you have.
Okay, board members, if you have questions, we'll start on Mr. Fur's side, and we'll work our way down. Thank you, Mr. Fur. Ms. Furtenbaum?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to recall a conversation from Ms. Klutz and the board. When I was talking to our chairman earlier this afternoon, as we were going through our conversation, I remembered that back when we were able to obtain the last construction money from the commissioners, that the county's financial officer, Ms. Dubois, had made a comment in a meeting that the only, to the commissioners on the recommendation to approve, that the only way they could do that if there was a commitment of the lottery funds to pay some of the debt service. So Ms. Minnet, you may remember that. I'm not sure if you were still on the board then, or a commissioner then. But do you remember that conversation, Kelly? It just hit me, I said, I forgot Pam actually had said that. We may not have voted on it, but the commissioners approved that money. So therefore, I think in good faith, we have an obligation to approve this.
And I did have, I did email today, and I did talk with Pam today, and clearly that is their intent when they made that obligation. That's what they were thinking. Now, whether, we didn't write that letter specifically that said that, but that was clearly their intent.
Yeah, so it is in their budget, is what I'm guessing.
It is in their budget. We did, you can go online and look at their five-year budget, and it, the $2 million is planned out for the next five years to 2017.
Okay, thank you.
It is.
Thank you, Ms. Furtenbaum. Mr. Kiger, you have questions in reference lottery?
No, I think that that's, that's fine. I mean, I think that's owning up to something that apparently that we have agreed to, so I think that's the, the proper thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger.
You're saying the $2 million is planned out for their debt service?
It is.
Ms. Carpenter, you can go ahead, because Mr. Kiger's finished.
Oh, okay. So you're saying the $2 million is planned out for their debt service, so we don't have it then?
It is, and that's just a conversation that Pam and I had today at 4:30.
Okay.
It's the email that went back and forth, and she sent me the, the planning document, the five-year planning document that's online, and highlighted it for me.
Okay, so it is already planned, so we, if we've agreed to it, then we've agreed to it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Minnet, you have comments?
No, I'm sorry to hear that that money is in, is already appropriated, but can we get a copy of, I mean, I was not on the board when all of this was done, so I don't have a recent copy of any kind of plan.
It's the, I can certainly send you what she sent me today, and it's online, and, you know, anyone can access that, but I, for ease for the board, I'll certainly forward that to you.
And just from another general comment, I think it's probably a good, a wise use of these funds, because I'm sure that the debt that was incurred had a higher rate of interest than any debt that you might incur, incur today. So that's probably, I'm just assuming that it did.
I know they've done some restructure of their debt too since then, so I, I can't speak for what their interest rate is right now.
But I agree with them. If that's what the board agreed to, then that's what, what should be done.
Ms. Carpenter?
My only question is, if that's the case, then do we need to change this amount then?
No, that's what they need to pay their debt right now.
Oh, okay.
They have some, they have more budgeted next year to pay their debt payment. So if you look in the five-year planning document that I'll, that I'll send you, you can see where they budgeted the amount that they need for, from lottery funds.
Well, where would this other $2 million, will it stay in our account, or where will it stay? Who, who gets the interest on that other $2 million?
We get the interest, or the county gets, it goes toward, it stays in our account, it accumulates or earns in our account, and then we pay it. It goes toward the debt or whatever we determine we want to use it for.
Oh, okay.
So it builds.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, and also Mrs. Minnet, for your comments. And what I'd like to do is because, and I'm just like Ms. Minnet, you know, I wasn't on the board when this agreement was made, and we, we did ask our attorney, Mr. Enrique, if he would review the contract that we had with the county from 2009, and, and not only for the remainder of the board that wasn't on here in 2009, but for the viewing audience, because it's always a hot topic, you know, what about the lottery funds? You know, why don't you build schools and all? Well, obviously, you know, the kind of money that we get from the lottery, it would take us about 20, 25 years to build a high school, getting what we get, but we do appreciate all that we do get. But I'd like to ask Mr. Enrique, if you will, just to, for the viewing audience, Mark, if you'll clarify what the agreement was, and, you know, I can say, I still did not know that until I got your email today, Ms. Klutz, that they, that the county had budgeted $2 million a year ongoing till 2017. So I don't think, I don't know if any of the other board members other than Ms. Furtenbaum had, had known that. And, but anyway, I'd like for Mr. Enrique to totally clarify the lottery funds as far as, you know, what the agreement was.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, it was not an agreement that our board did. It was, my recollection in our conversation today was that it was actually, it may have been in a work session setting or perhaps at a regular commissioners' meeting, where the county manager and the CFO for the county recommended that the commissioners approve, as they do, as staff normally does to the commissioners, that they approve the funding and that they would be able to pay the debt service using the lottery funds. So it wasn't anything we voted on as a Board of Education. It was the commissioners who said, "We can do this funding now," basically advance you the money if we know we have that money to pay debt service. That's my recollection of how it occurred, and I think that's probably, so it was not our vote, but it was an agreement that we had priorities, we had high needs, we had to open another high school, et cetera, and so this is how we'll do it.
Thank you, Ms. Furtenbaum. And of course, like I say, the written agreement, though, to my understanding, it only pertained to the year 2009. But then this ongoing $2 million per year was something that I didn't know about, and that was a discussion like Ms. Furtenbaum was talking about. But anyway, Mr. Enrique, if you could explain that for us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. My understanding, and what I did, I just wanted to look at the board action taken in 2009. At that time, we were talking to the county about getting COPS funding to continue with the construction. We were building, I believe it's four different schools underway at that point, and the county commissioners indicated that they could issue the COPS funding if we agreed to provide the lottery proceeds to help with those interest payments. The immediate action that that board took was giving them the current lottery balance, which was just over $2 million, I think, or $2.5 million at the time in 2009. So that's what the resolution is. There was not in the resolution or the letter specific reference to future allocations, and I do think there'd be an issue legally whether the 2009 board could bind this board. It is true that you really, to, to get access from the, to those funds, you need to submit an application signed by both the county commissioners and the Board of Education. So it's a joint process. They're the funders, and we're involved in the project, so it really is a matter of the two boards agreeing on those priorities. So it's my understanding from what Ms. Furtenbaum said in the conversation was that the lottery funds would help pay the interest on those COPS. That's an annual interest expense. But I don't believe the board was legally bound by anything that took place in 2009 to give those funds, but it sounds like it makes sense to do that, and that's obviously what the county is expecting in their budget documents. So I don't think you're, you're not legally required to vote for this, but it seems like that's what the, the discussions were at the time, and that certainly appears to be the county expectation on these funds. And again, the county provides a lot of funds for construction. It's not just the lottery funds. There's a number of different funding sources. We get a lot of capital money, and so it's a complex, it's not just looking at these individual funds. They may need these funds to pay interest on old debt so that they're in a position to incur new debt going forward for new construction that may be underway. I think Ms. Carpenter has a.
I have one question, because we're given the lottery funds. Now, what is paying, what is the tax that was just recently approved? What is that paying?
It, it goes toward debt too, but we have a significant amount of debt on the, the construction that we have over the.
How much, does anybody know how much money that's raised?
I have a spreadsheet that I can provide you that Mr. Dubois has given.
I'm interested, because, I mean, we're turning over the lottery funds now, and now I'm hearing, they're saying, okay, we want you to turn over all of those, and we did this tax, because see, that tax was not approved at that time. That was something that was additional, because that hadn't been approved. And so now you're saying that we want this, and I, I'm, I'm just curious how much that's generated, because that hadn't been approved before. You're saying, we said we were gonna do this.
But Carolyn, keep in mind that Cox Mill High School was close to $50 million, wasn't it? You know, so when you're looking at, this $2 million a year is a drop in the bucket to pay the mortgage.
I'm not questioning, but I'm, I'm just curious how much, because one of the things, you know, that we know what we are gonna have to have is money for, you know, for the land that we know we've got to buy. And so that's, that's one of the things. I mean, I don't mind paying our share, which we know we've got to, and we've got this, but in, on the other hand, we know we've got to have land. And where's that money going? And that was the agreement, okay, we're going to do this, but are, on the other hand, are they gonna help us purchase land? And they had told us, okay, five years down the road, we know we're gonna have to have an elementary school. Now, if we're gonna pay debt service, and we're gonna do all these, are we going to get this five years down the road?
I guess Blake, you have some information on that.
Well, a little bit. I did want to clarify, because last week, we, we threw out that five years a couple times, and, and I think we need to be careful that that's not five years from today. That was five years from a couple years ago. We're a couple years or a few years into that period for, for the general public that's watching and wondering, wait a minute, from 2012 till 2017, and that's not the five-year period.
Yeah, we're at three years.
Yeah, we're three or three and a half years into that period. And, and the other thing, I guess I wanted to, to make sure, and, and Ms. Carpenter, you serve on that committee, that, that we are actively pursuing land as we speak to, to address the, the issue that Dr. Sein brought to our attention formally last week. We've, we've known about it, we've talked about it on, on previous occasions for an elementary school replacement. So we're, we're not sitting on our hands, wondering what we're gonna do with lottery funds on, on a rainy day. We, we, we know that these funds, if we've agreed to these, but we also know that we've got to be proactive in some of the things that, that we're doing and working with the commissioners to try to get that, that land purchase funded. So anyway, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger, and all the other board members for your comments on this. And then one thing about it, you know, we definitely have to be more than fair with our county commissioners, because I'll tell you, they've got a big responsibility and a big burden on them as, as they look at funding all the different departments in the county, and Cabarrus County Schools takes up a big portion of the county budget already. And then when you look at that, and what I understand, I know that they paid some of the debt service from excess funds here, earlier part of the year, but I still understand, though, that we still $80, $90 million in debt for the construction of all these schools over the last number of years. So we definitely want to do our part and be well above board and transparent, and even, you know, they're asking for $6,371,000, and that's the motion tonight on the table that, that we approve that along with them, so they can withdraw that money and make a COPS payment. And so with that being said, do I have a motion that we approve this?
Mr.?
Yes, Ms. Furtenbaum?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, if you'll allow, I'd like to just modify the first line of that motion.
Okay.
Not for the amount. I would just like to make the motion that our Board of Education join the Board of Commissioners in requesting the release of $6,371,266 from the Public School Building Capital Fund Lottery Distribution.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. And Ms. Monroe, did you get that terminology?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we have a motion in a second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Board, for your vote on this, and thank you, commissioners, for watching, for, you know, all that you do for the Board of Education. We really appreciate it. Okay, and we're gonna move on now to 9.2. We'll have Mr. Wickie to come to the podium, and he's gonna be talking with us about the QSCV projects that's been postponed, and we're gonna hopefully wrap this item up tonight too. Okay, so Mr. Wickie, when you get ready, we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me take you to the last item, last attachment. We'll sort of talk about the good news first. Actually, it's all good news, but I just, there was a question raised during last week's presentation and, and earlier by the board regarding what kind of monies are left over? over at this point. And so we've done a little research on that, and, um, as we, we look at it today, this is the same basic, um, table that you looked at last week, but the change is, is that we've now, uh, done two things. We, we've looked at the real surplus as we know it today, and then also, um, we looked at combining both of the Concord High School projects and showing you what we believe will be the cost of that, and I'll get into that in a moment. But what I wanted to do is take your eye down to this line right here, if you can see that. It's called surplus funds from all of the QSCB projects. So that is really, um, there is some money left yet in another line, which is basically to address active projects that may have, that have, has a need potentially for contingency. But everything else that was sort of sitting in projects has now been slid over to what I'm gonna call a reserve fund, in effect, a contingency group of dollars, and that totals eight hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. So as you can see, uh, we're in very good shape, and, uh, those dollars are available to be used for whatever we, where the Board deems necessary and possible through these funds and through this program. To that, to that point, then, what I would like to do is indicate, uh, the, the purpose of this table, of course, was, as you may recall, to, uh, get agreement of the Board in support for recommending this order of projects as the priority order from this point forward on the remaining postponed projects, uh, items one through four. And then, uh, projects one, uh, five through nine, in our recommendation to the Board, would, would go unfunded. And, um, having said that, we, we looked at, uh, a couple of options last week with you on what could be done at Concord High School, and I'm going to get back to, I'll probably blow this, Kelly, but, going back to the home, right there, okay. Going back to this, I want to take you to this plan, and this is an overall site plan of Concord High School. And we talked about the, uh, current vocational ed building and the possibility of adding in addition to that structure, uh, for, uh, the, um, use by, uh, well, voc ed, of course, but, but potentially by the, um, Fire Academy. And we also looked at an addition to the fieldhouse, which is this white structure right here, and the possibility of adding in addition to it for, uh, the weight room. Uh, and the weight room, just to be completely clear, uh, is located in this wing of the now, of the vocational building at this time. After studying this for a week, looking at it with the architects, uh, one of our project managers, Stephane Smith, was sitting there taking this all in and said, "Well, why in the world don't we just consider in addition to the auxiliary gymnasium?" And we all kind of looked around, and he said, "Why don't we? That's a heck of an idea." So, so we started looking very hard at that. And, uh, this is sort of a, a artist's view, if you will, of what it would be like to add approximately two thousand square foot of space to the auxiliary gym, which is located right here, and, uh, how that would work out. And that's, we're sort of, we, we've looked at that. We think that, one, it's, it's possible to do that. We can physically add to that building and, and create the space necessary for that function. And what it does is it allows us then to offer the space that is currently used by the, um, weight room in the voc ed building to the Fire Academy for its use. It would more than double its current space that it has in the school, and it would also give them some parking space immediately adjacent to the Voc Education Building for their fire vehicles, and emergency vehicles. Uh, it's not, when I, I'm, I'm certainly not proposing that as a long-time, long-term solution at all, uh, but it certainly can be done with relatively few dollars spent on the Voc Ed building. Uh, it, it really is a wide-open, large space that would simply need some painting and fixing up. And the, the new facility for the, um, weight room, uh, space is in addition to the existing auxiliary gym. I'll, I'll take you back to the overall plan. The nice thing about this is it really centralizes, this is the area again, it centralizes that function for all the students. So not only will the athletes that might, you know, frequent the baseball fields or the, uh, football field have use of that, but literally every gym class, every, every student in the school would have use of that facility and have access to it. So I think it's, it really can be a win-win situation, and, uh, I, I think, in talking with the architects, I feel very strongly that, that this is the best of the solutions that we can offer you at this time. And now, I know I'm jumping around a little bit, but I wanted to show you the pictures because, as I said, it really is a, a win-win situation. With regard to the, um, funding, we've projected the total cost for, for that addition, uh, for the, for the weight room and a, and a minor remodeling to the Voc Education Building of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We had allocated to the, the weight room improvements and the Voc Ed building remodeling a hundred and five thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars. So we're looking at an additional cost of two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars to get us to the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar total budget. And as I said earlier, uh, that's been calculated in these, uh, numbers down here. We have a total need for the four projects that we are recommending as priority projects, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, excuse me, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And taking all the funds available into account, which is roughly one point, or one million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, we'd still have a revenue reserve in the QSCB funds of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, ninety-three dollars. So we're in very good shape. We, we still have certainly money to do these projects. We will be in good shape. Uh, I'm, I'm anxious to see, of course, as we all are, where the gym bids come in for Northwest, and we do have some remaining projects to finish up, as we've talked about earlier, uh, last week's meeting. But, but clearly, we're in good shape now. There are some projects we would recommend to, uh, basically use up those remaining funds, but I'd first like to see us bid the work that remains to be bid and then discuss what, what might be used, what those funds might be used for. One of them I will point out is, uh, we, we've talked a little bit about, is Mount Pleasant High School. That was the one major existing, uh, school that probably could seriously use a mechanical update. And, and it was sort of next on the list of the QSCB funding, and, and we, we had to stop at a certain point, so that one didn't get included. And that is one of the projects that we would recommend spending some of those dollars on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wickie. We'll start on Ms. Minnet's side for a Board questions.
No question, just a comment. Um, I think you've done a masterful job of handling all of this. That would be just too, too much for me, that's for sure. But I do think both the Northwest High School gym and this concept that you've just come up with on the Concord High School weight room are examples of how the first idea is not necessarily the best one, and it always pays to look at something as thoroughly as you possibly can and work it every, every way possible to see what's the best, not only, um, for the purposes that we need, but for the financial situation. So I congratulate you for doing it as well as you've done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Minnet. Ms. Carpenter, you have comments, questions?
I second that. Always look and recheck. And I know you've told me, Beverly Hills, why did we put, uh, I know you've told me that, why did we put it down there at the lower level?
It, it really has to do with, we, we plan on remodelling, excuse me, Beverly Hills in time, and because of the nature of the work that is ultimately planned or at least being considered for that school, it would be short-sighted to do something at this time because it may radically change what we would do from a mechanical standpoint for that building or that complex.
So it's kind of in the same situation that Mount Pleasant's in?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we do have money left over, then we'll be looking the same way we're doing with Mount Pleasant.
Yes.
You're basically telling the same thing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm, uh, want to echo the comments on the, the creativity part of trying to find a, a solution to a problem. I'm gonna go back to what the comments I made last week, that, uh, we, we are so far along on the Northwest gym, uh, with, with a lot of energy and that has been expended there, without knowing where we are bid-wise, and it, and, and, you know, it's, it's tough for me to release these funds. Even, I, I, I know it, it leaves a seven sixty-four oh ninety-three, which is a, a pretty good chunk of money, but I guess what I'd want to hear, and you're, and I don't know how, if you know any more today than you knew last week on where we are, because I, I guess my fear is, if that doesn't cover it, and then we have to substantially change what we designed to try to hit the budget number, when, had we just waited a little bit, you know, there's something here that, that we held off on to increase that amount of contingency. So, not to put you on the spot, but I mean, professionally speaking, is, from, from where we are with the drawings and the feedback that you've gotten and talking to the architect, do, do we think we're either gonna stay under the original budget or within that seven sixty-four oh ninety-three on the, on the gym at Northwest?
I'll ask Steve to step up in a moment, but two things I would, I would point out. One is, uh, in the, in the budget that we, excuse me, in the cost estimate that we had from their consultant, from the architect's consultant, there was an estimation or an estimator's contingency, which is always a wise thing to do from a cost estimator's standpoint. So there's some buffer there. And then in addition, there's, as you may recall, there's a large number of alternates. Uh, probably half of those were high-cost dollar items that could or, or could not, could or won't have to be included depending on what choices the Board makes following the bids being taken. So, and the point in, in those, selecting those particular groups of, group of contingencies, excuse me, alternates, was to allow us to have the contingency or the option of reducing the bid cost if necessary. So I think there's tho, those two things are, are at play here. But I also, I know that the architects were working on, on coming closer on the, on the review of the budget. I was gonna ask Steve, do you have any more to share at this time, or?
Yeah, I just want to point out that the, the estimate that we did get was from a design development estimate, and there's not a lot of things on a draw, on the drawings then, so the estimator's making a lot of assumptions. So, um, Friday, we gave the drawings to, uh, the construction documents to our estimator, and he's supposed to have something back to us by the end of next Friday.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll know then where we stand. Uh, I think we're pretty comfortable where we are, um, but time will tell when we get his estimates.
Well, that, that, you know, next Friday's good, but I, I'm just, it, it just, I guess I'm uncomfortable with releasing this without knowing that. I, I, I think you're right about some of the contingency and some of the alternates, but, uh, um, that just, that just makes me nervous.
Could I just add?
Sure.
Mr. Kiger, that in, in approving this, you're approving simply the priority. We're not gonna run out and spend the money tomorrow morning. I, I didn't mean to imply that. We need to get this priority list to the county commissioners. That, that's our commitment to them, is that we're gonna present something to them in October. And so that's the reason we have this whole list and going through this process with you. In terms of when you want us to start these projects and when you, we can hold on the projects in terms of, you know, when we actually start spending those dollars.
Okay, well, good. Well, I'm glad you clarified that then.
Surely.
Because I'm, and in my mind, and I guess mistakenly, thinking that we're turning these loose, and that's not the case. Okay, well, thank you, then. We could've saved a little, uh, time there. Sorry.
I mean, if, if you're okay, though, with it, if, if what I'd like to do is, is bring back the budget information in October, and if we're good there at that point, then I would ask that we...
Oh, I think, without question. If we see that we're okay with the, with, with the budget that we've set up at Northwest, then all of a sudden, we've got the list, we've got the, the numbers. We, we then can eat into some of the contingency, because you've already got some for these four items. You've got, uh, um, four fifty-eight, eight sixty-seven to add to those. And then I think we start figuring out how to get through the end of the bottom to the last dollar and, and what we're gonna do from there. So that makes, that makes perfect sense to me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Uh, Ms. Furtenbaum, you have questions?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Lynn, I, I was kind of going down the same path that Blake was just talking about, just to make sure. Um, but if we're not gonna really spend the money, I guess for, I really like this, um, Concord Gym Edition Annex, or whatever you wanna call it, um, because I was concerned last week about the distance, that you could not reasonably have classes and children make it back and forth, um, from having that weight room too far away. So I would ask that on row three, just for presentation and, and if you will, acknowledgement standpoint, the vocational building appears to be the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is not because of the row. It looks like the, the weight room is ten thousand, three forty. It's really the opposite. They, they appear to be in the wrong order, and I think we need to be very clear what the anticipated expense of each one is. Because, for example, as the architects get to the estimates for the weight room, I'll call it the gym annex, which I would prefer to call it, something like that, instead of just weight room, even though that's what will be in there, because it is an acad, it's supposed to be an academic space primarily.
Yes.
Not the after-school space primarily. Um, so, um, once we get those estimates, a design and, and estimates, I think we'll be in a better position, Blake, to, you know, to decide if we can spend the money there. I like seeing the three fifty. Um, but I do have a question, Lynn. For things, even for the Northwest gym, for this vocational building, weight room, do those include furniture and fixtures inside? Because, for example, I can't imagine that Concord, their weight equipment is probably not in good shape, you know? And, and that's fairly expensive equipment. So it's not like buying a couple desks and bookcases, which we can go to the office supply and get those, you know?
No, I, I think that's a very good observation, Ms. Furtenbaum. Uh, it does not include the weight equipment. You're, I know that we talked with Principal Black, um, previously about that, and, and actually was prior to the time where we got confirmation that we could spend money on furnishings and equipment that are specifically necessary for the function of the space, i.e. the, the furniture at the, the dining room furniture for Concord High School. So with that in mind, um, I would say that we would want to increase that budget if that's what the Board's liking is, is to include the weight equipment, because what they have right now is outdated and, and quite, quite used, and, uh...
When it's not safe at some point.
Right.
Um, I would just ask, from my standpoint, that vocational building remodeling is the lower-expense item, and I think it's more important than the weight room, quite honestly. So, um, I would just like to see, just flip your order, um, yeah, actually, the order of the numbers. I think the vocational building is on the top of that line, and I guess I, they're not related anymore. Well, I guess they are related, because you have to move the weight room out, that's true, to do the other.
Yes, that's right. That's, that's the only reason I kept it in.
So you can't do one, that's true. You can't do one without the other. I was just thinking, if we got short on money, we could still fit in that Fire Academy space, but we can't because they wouldn't have the available opening.
Correct.
So, okay. Well, as long as we're not gonna spend any, I guess, can, can we, um, Mr. Chair, ask Mr. Wickie to, to proceed with the, um, I guess, whatever, architectural site planning that would be necessary to get that evaluation done, um, so that we're not delaying at such time when we could do it?
As for me, I have no problem with it. You know, how about the other board members? Anybody have a problem with it? No, I have, I have no problem with it whatsoever, Ms. Wickie.
Is that any, any kind of separate motion, or...
Well, I, I think we're saying these are the priorities.
Right, because all we're...
So if we say it's the priorities, and he just takes the top twenty thousand or whatever it is to go do that startup work.
Okay.
Because we, we've built schools like that, where we kind of get the land, we site it, we get the architect work done, and then we keep going as we have money, so...
Yeah, we're hoping to repeat that currently with what we're doing.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only other, and I'm sorry to, uh, we still waiting to hear from, from Mr. Fur, but can we go ahead and get an, an, an estimate on the equipment that's gonna be needed so that we're not worried, you know, down the line, we, we'll know what the dollar amount we're talking about is?
I'd be happy to do that.
What we're looking at, we know, and I think we're, I, I agree with Blake, where our concern is, we know Northwest is gonna be tight, and I think that's where our concern is, where Northwest falls in and what we'll have left. And that's, my concern's the very same as yours, Blake, where that is. And then our second one's where Concord is, but I agree with you, Cindy, we need, if we're going to do this with the weight room, making sure they have safe, proper equipment in doing that.
And likewise, I don't know what kind of equipment is really needed in Northwest. I think you had the bleachers, they're gonna reuse the old bleachers, some additional bleachers. You know, there might be some, I don't know if there's some desk or filing cabinets or some, I don't know, I don't know if anything's needed in there, if they're just going to bring it from what I call the dungeon, underneath the gym, up kind of thing, but likewise, they wouldn't have as much need. I think the weight room equipment would be more, but we just want to make sure we cover that for them.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh. It was a very good observation. Mr. Fur, you have any comments?
First of all, Lynn, I'm glad you gave Stefan some props, because all the people I know in this county and the school system that's been here quite a few years, he is highly respected. And if Stefan says something's broke or needs done, then it needs done.
Yes, sir.
So that was a wise choice to listen to him. I don't think you'll ever get an argument from, listening to what Stefan has to say. But another thing, just to make a little observation about the weight facility at Concord and the equipment, somebody may, someone may correct me, but I think, maybe Donna can help me on this, but I think schools are allocated so much money, and it's the principal's discretion or an A.D.'s discretion on how much weight equipment they buy, and the reason Concord's weight equipment is probably not in the shape that maybe some of the other schools is. They decided to allocate it somewhere else. Am I right, Donna? So if you go and buy them all new weight equipment, you're just going to open up a can of worms for these other schools that chose to use their money for the weight equipment.
That's true.
Like Central Bears just redid, or in the process of redoing their weight room, and what they did was trade their old equipment in, and the community raised the money for the rest of it. No money came from the school. So that's one thing you're going to have to guard against. I mean, you could, you know, I don't know, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I think that's the way it works.
Even if that's the case, and it may very well be, I guess I'd like to know what the order of magnitude is, and in that way, you know...
Well, I think what Central Bears did was traded theirs in, and I think it ended up costing them about 14,000 to 16,000 with trading in old equipment. So it's going to cost you, oh, they've got connections, I mean, the people that make the stuff, the manufacturers of it, but all these coaches know who to deal with and talk to, but it's probably going to cost you 20,000.
Well, one thing about it, the motion that's before us tonight is just the priority of the list. That's the motion that's before us tonight. And this is things that will come, and we've discussed it, and so obviously, there will have to probably maybe be some more discussion at some point about the budget for the weight equipment, that type thing. And as all those board members have stated, the construction project out at Northwest, you know, without being redundant, we don't know 100% where we are, and so the public might say, well, you know, you're looking at 800,000 contingency there, but that's still, you know, that's not a lot when you're working with the projects that we're working with, and then the remainder of the projects that we would like to get done. But anyway, the motion before us tonight, and that is, do I have a motion that we approve the postponed project priority list as it is presented to us tonight? Do I have a motion? Board members, all right, I got motion. Blake made the motion, Tim seconded it. Do I have any further discussion, or are we ready to vote?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify that the word postponed continues and is reused, so we have a projects and priority order on top, and then we have to remain as postponed. So I just want to be clear that we are approving the priority order and the postponed, not just the postponed.
Okay, that's fine. Do you have that, Ms. Monroe? Okay, with the amended motion, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, the motion carries six oh. Thank you, Lynn. Now, you've got one more item on the agenda tonight, and that is the 9.3, which is the Concord High School request for the approval of bids. And so, Mr. Wickie, when you're ready, we're ready.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to read you the statement for the benefit of the public that can't necessarily see this this evening. It says, "In an effort to expedite the ordering of furniture for the newly remodeled dining room, and per the direction of the board at its work session in September 10, 2012, the facilities maintenance department staff has been conducting due diligence reviews of all the products submitted by the various bidders to make certain that they comply with the bid specifications. In order to move the ordering of the furniture along, all but five bid items can be accepted at this time. The remaining five items will be resolved by staff upon further product review. Therefore, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the board authorize facilities maintenance department staff to award purchase orders to six of the 11 low bidders, as noted on the attached bid tab. Allow staff to determine the most appropriate products for the remaining five bid packages, and authorize facilities maintenance department staff to award those purchase orders based on their final review." And this bid tab has been revised, oh boy, that's small. Let me try that size. Yep. Yeah. I hope you all can see that reasonably well. What we're trying to show in this, as you recall, you did ask us to go back and talk to the one vendor who was saying that, you know, that they couldn't just accept the two bids, if they would accept, and what I'm referring to, as I'm referring to interior systems, as the bidder that had bid number six and bid number, excuse me, bid number 10. And you suggested a couple of things. One initially was to talk to Palmer Hamilton about whether or not they would match those bids. They did agree to do that. But you also instructed us to talk with the first bidder and ask them if they would accept, if they would stay with those two bids that they had assigned, plus accept the bid for fiberglass booths, bid number nine. I discussed that with the vendor, and they said unfortunately, the way it works is they really cannot offer those same prices if they only have a limited number of bids, in other words, a limited amount of money in this process, because the price is sort of a bulk price, if you will, and they're not getting as much discount as they need to make it all work. So in that, we're sort of back to ground zero. The five, by the way, excuse me, the six products that we sort of agree are fine, they meet spec, and we would like to move forward, are the ones that are in red or bold red ink. It's bid number one, two, three, five, eight, and 11. And those we've reviewed, we found the specifications to be quite acceptable, and would like to move forward with those. The largest bid number is related to bid number four, or the largest amount of the money in the bid is number four, and that is the large, fold-down, attached seating-type dining room tables that you see in all of the schools. The Palmer Hamilton, we've checked, and so far from all the schools that have responded, we don't own a Palmer Hamilton table. Even though they're a national vendor, we don't own one of their tables. So they've actually manufactured one for us, to our specifications as best they can do it, and they're shipping it here this week. We're going to put it side by side with what we have had as our recent standard and is bid by Interior Systems, which is the AMTAP table. The AMTAP table is a very high-quality, very easy to operate, and very light table, yet very durable. So we're going to kind of put them side by side, and we're going to have them operated and reviewed by the people who have what we consider the best tables in our system. And if they, if they come up to speed and they look reasonably compatible, then we're going to recommend that we move forward with Palmer Hamilton. If not, if there's a significant falloff in terms of quality, or appearance, or operability, which is important, then our recommendation would be to go back to the next lowest bidder, who in that case is Interior Systems, and bid number four, for $25,200. We will say that the two schools that we've put these tables in are Winkler and Wolf Medals. And the people at Wolf Medals, a couple of the fellows were having serious back problems, having a lot of difficulty operating the tables. They said they can operate the AMTAP tables with one hand. That's how easy and well-manufactured they are. That's the kind of thing I'm going to be looking for in the Palmer Hamilton tables. And I'm not saying that Palmer Hamilton isn't a good quality table, but I think that's very important, is to maintain the quality that we have. So that's the kind of flexibility we'd like, as we are continuing to review specification qualifications on the remaining non-red titled bid items, bid item number four, six, seven, nine, and 10. And once we work that out, we'd like to be able to have the latitude to go forward based on our reviews.
Okay, Mr. Wickie, there you have it, board members. And, you know, as for myself, I'm certainly okay with doing it the way that you're wanting to do it, but I'd like to hear from my board, and we'll start with Mr. Fur. Mr. Fur, you have comments? The motion is that superintendent's recommendation that the board authorize facilities maintenance department staff to award purchase orders for six of the 11 low bidders, as noted on the attached bid tab, and also to allow the staff to determine the most appropriate products for the remaining five bid packages, and authorize facility maintenance department staff to award those purchase orders based on their final review. Now, that's the motion, and Mr. Fur, if you have questions, we'll move on down the line.
Is this on the step I was just...
Don't forget your mic, Mr. Fur.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fur. Ms. Furtinbaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question, Lynn, about if the Palmer Hamilton table is not acceptable because of weight or difficulty to use or whatever, the next lowest bid would be the first one, the Interior Systems, and you know what product that is.
Yes.
So are you basically asking to keep bids six, nine, and 10 open to see if they all go to Interior Systems? Is that the philosophy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just, I worry about somebody bidding, they bid the individual parts, then they choose not to honor the bids, and we may end up awarding them more. I mean, I don't like to do business that way. If you're not going to do business with me, I'm not going to find a way to do business with you, so.
I will say that...
That concerns me a bit.
Right. This particular vendor has been very helpful. You know, she went out of her way to assist us in getting information for the bid specifications. She's many times has gone as far as, you know, directing us to look at competitors' products where she knew they were installed. I remember she was one of the people that recommended that I look. So I knew the difference, the difference between the products we were using in our schools and the products in other schools. And I traveled as far as South Carolina per her recommendation to say, look at what are considerably, are considered to be equals in the industry, because at that time, I was relatively new to that. And so I can say in all honesty, I think, I think she's a reputable dealer, and she's just being honest with us. She's just saying, really, and it was probably what we chose to do, she, we chose to break it up in as many columns, as you say, as many bids as you see. Originally, it was her understanding, excuse me, that it would be a total package bid. And she said ironically, as it worked out, if that were the case, she would not have gotten the bid. But she said, excuse me, she really did believe that that's how everyone would be bidding it. And so she was a little miffed by the fact that we'd broken it down into individual packages, because as I say, she was looking to, thank you very much, she was looking to do it as a, as a total package and not individual. And it does make a difference. It's no different than if you, if you went to the store and you bought one of something versus a larger quantity.
Yeah, I would suggest that this is probably a good lesson, and in future bids, not to break it down quite this granular, maybe set a $10,000 threshold for each grouping of items or something, because we're spending, and you're spending even way more time than we are looking at this.
Yes.
It's almost not worth, you know, than just taking that total package and, you know, or splitting it into two or three, but not 12, or 11. So, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh. Ms. Keiger, Mr. Keiger, you're good. Ms. Carpenter, good. Ms. Minnet, you're good. Okay, board members, you have the motion. Do I have a motion that this motion be approved as it's presented?
It's a lose.
Mr. Fur made the motion, Ms. Minnet seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries six oh. Okay, Mr. Wickie, you got your marching orders there on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for our meeting to come to a conclusion, and this pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or condition of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursue it to General Statute 143.318.11A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged to discuss the pending judicial action. Okay, so it's time for us to convene in closed session. Do I have a motion that this meeting be adjourned?
Same thing.
Oh, convene in closed session. Excuse me, I just read it. Oh, my, okay. Do I have a motion that we convene in closed sessions? All right, we got that. Carolyn, and then second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, ladies and gentlemen, the meeting's adjourned, or in closed session. I'll get it right in a minute.
Continue right at the hall.
No, no.